Good evening. Welcome to the Curriculum Evaluation Committee meeting on Monday, November 15th, 2021. It's 6:00 PM in the Nashua High School North Boardroom. In attendance for the meeting, I will call the role Ray Grino.
I'm here.
Sharon Gilio.
Yeah.
Jessica Brown is here. We have a quorum. Also in attendance, we have Paula Johnson and Dottie Oden from the Board of Education. We have Assistant Superintendent Sarfati. And to begin the presentation tonight, I'm sorry, you'll have to remind me of your name?
Monica Tino.
Monica Tino, thank you. And we'll have a few other guests tonight this evening also. So since the meeting is called to order, we'll go ahead and start with the first item on the agenda, which is an update on the Amplify Science curriculum.
Hi. So I'm here tonight to talk to you a little bit about what the Next Gen Science Standard, Teaching with the Next Gen Science Standards in Amplify Science looks like in the classroom. So I'm going to show you one of our units. It's a fifth grade unit called Patterns of Earth and Sky. So the students start off the unit with what we call an anchor question. So for this particular unit, we look at this artifact that some scientists found, and we ask them, what do you think is on the missing piece? So they spend the entire unit trying to figure out what is on the missing piece of this artifact, because they want to be able to put it in a museum and tell people what they think was on the missing piece. So then the students get time to really kind of grapple with this artifact and look at it. They first go around and they look at noticing, so they're really inspecting it really closely. And then they're starting to draw their ideas out. This is kind of our pre-assessment to see what the students know already. So they start to kind of look at it and try to figure out, well, what do I think is on the missing piece? And then they develop all of these questions. And what we do with those questions is we create what's called a drive-in question board. So all of our units work this way. And the students put up all of their questions on the bulletin board, because they're, you know, important questions to trying to figure out this missing piece, this piece of the puzzle. And then we kind of organize the questions a little bit, and we say, you know what? These kind of questions all have to do with the sun. And these questions all have to do with seeing stars. And these questions have to do with stars during the day. So they're kind of problem solving here. We have this problem, what's on the missing piece? And now their questions are going to help us drive our instruction. And that's why we call it the drive-in question board. Their questions are driving their instruction. So then you start off with one of the groups, and you start investigating. And what they're doing is they're using and engaging with the science practices, and they're doing investigations, they're using computer simulations, they're reading books, they're doing scientific modeling, and they're writing scientific explanations. So in this particular unit, there are five books that the students have. They have digital copies, they have read aloud copies in Spanish and in English, and they also have the actual book to touch and look at. And there, like I said, there are five for this unit, this particular unit. So one of the questions that we investigate in this unit is where are the stars in space? So the students go into one of the books, and they see this constellation called Pegasus. And they see how it has the four stars there that are connected to make that box. So we're trying to figure out where are the stars in space? So we make a model of it. So here's an example of what some students did. In the classroom, we do it with people holding it. During remote learning, the kids actually did it at home like this and took pictures for their teachers. And so we start off the model, and we say, okay, well, the balls there are representing the stars that are in Pegasus, and they kind of look like that. But what does it look like in space? So then we actually go back to our simulation here. This is an example of one of the Amplify simulations. And you can see that the students have a lot of, it's kind of just running here, but the students actually can manipulate it. They can decide what date it is, so they could go to their birthday when they were born and see when the star, what the stars look like, the sky look like. So in this particular one, what we were doing was having the students go and find out how far away were these stars that make up the constellation Pegasus. So you'll see the little cursor going to one of the stars right now, and when you go near it, it tells you the distance. So the students, this is an investigation they're doing with this simulation. The students then gather data from their simulation. So they figured out how far away each of those stars that make up the constellation Pegasus are. And then we made a really simple conversion there, and we said, well, each light year equals one centimeter. So then the students went back to their model and said, okay, let's figure out where the sun goes, and now we can figure out where these stars go. So as you can see here, they measured them out, and they moved the stars. So that's a scale model. So now they're modeling in science. So that's a scale model of how far away those stars are. Then when you look at it from this way, you can still see the square. So the students were able to investigate in the sim and create this model that kind of is like, you know, it's a model, it's modeling, it's kind of like real life, so that they're able to see, well, how far away are the stars and how do they look? So then we go back to the classroom, and we say, well, we just read a book, we used the sim, we did an investigation, we made a model, so now we're going to keep track of this. And what you see up there is what we call the anchor chart, those, all those little boxes where it says what's on the missing piece. And so we keep track of our learning while we're figuring out what's on the missing piece. So that was our question, where are the stars in space? Those are the things that we did. Now we have to jot down, well, this is what we figured out, and what does this have to do with what's on the missing piece? So the kids are keeping track of what they're learning. And this is just an example of, this isn't the whole unit, but just kind of what it looks like. And then the students take what they figured out, and these are key concepts for the unit, and they put them together. And from putting all of those key concepts that they figured out in investigations by engaging in the science practices, they're then able to figure out what's on the missing piece. And of course, I'm not going to let you know what that is tonight, because our students are figuring it out as we speak. But that's kind of the unit in a nutshell. This is, I asked some teachers and students to just give some feedback, and this is one of the teachers, I'm just going to read it for you. It says, "Science was my favorite subject to teach while remote teaching last year. Even though we were remote, student engagement still happened. Our class loved when we completed the at-home investigations. They looked forward to these times and always came prepared and excited to complete the activity together. They'd always ask when the next lesson or activity or Mrs. Tino video would be. A favorite memory of mine was all of us on Zoom with our cups of liquids and bags of spices investigating which ones were the emulsifiers." So that was from last year from remote learning. All the students had, were sent home with materials to do their investigations. Another teacher wrote, "My biggest takeaway was how students were so impressed with some of the concepts, like Cleopatra's tears, or just how far away the sun is, or how cool it was making salad dressing, and that, and that just one addition could make the dressing look more appealing. Everything was such a big deal, they really do become hooked at the beginning of each unit as they assign the role of the scientist." Another teacher wrote, "My students love the kinesthetic visual and online models we create in earth science. They are gathering evidence from multiple investigations that are simple and effective. They are having scientific discussions in small groups and working together to solve problems. It's my favorite part of the day." And the last teacher, "The thing I have found most surprising is the amount of engagement the students have with the books provided with each unit. The students really enjoy reading them, and they are using them to gather evidence for their thinking without being prompted, which to me is a sign of a good informational text. I will be using these as anchor text when teaching informational skills in reading class, because the students engage with them so well." And this is just a picture of a classroom of some students this year, they're reflecting on their understanding here. And these were just a couple of students' quotes. "I like how we have time for our lessons. The slides help to slow down our learning, and I don't feel rushed. I really like the simulations. I have never used them before, and they are so helpful. It really helps me understand what I am learning. The graphics are helpful, especially the map that showed how energy flowed through the city." That was from a fourth grade class this year. So that's kind of science in a nutshell with the Next Generation Science Standards and
Thank you. Dr. Sarfati, do you have something to add?
Yeah. Can you just talk a little bit about where we are right now in terms of our implementation of Amplify?
Sure. So right now, the middle school is using it, six to eight. In fifth grade, this is our second year using it. We started it last year with the, with remote learning. And I, there are about four fourth grade teachers this year using Amplify Science.
Do we have any questions from the committee? I actually had one question. You mentioned the books. Are those hard copy or digital books that accompany this curriculum?
I'm sorry, are they?
You mentioned that the kids are approaching the textbooks as well, which I think that is great. Are they hard copy or digital books?
They have both. So they have a digital copy, they have the hard copies, one for each student plus some. And they also have read alouds in English and in Spanish.
Excellent. Thank you. Mrs. Johnson?
Thank you. Thank you for the great present, excuse me, the presentation tonight. I appreciate this. Now, you're saying fifth grade is starting with this this year, the Amplify?
Their second year.
Their second year. And the fourth grade is starting?
We're kind of piloting it in fourth grade. We have about four teachers using it this year.
Okay. I kind of would like to get their feedback compared to Amplify with the curriculum that they're using like right now. How do they feel like, you know, the changeover? How would, how did everybody feel about the changeover from the curriculum that we had before to this now?
You're asking me my opinion. I can't really speak for the other teachers. I can speak for myself and tell you what, you know, what I think, if that's what you're looking for.
That's fine.
So we started, in K to five, we started using Mystery Science a few years ago, so that's fairly new as well. Before that, they, I think it was, I'm not really sure what it was, so I won't even comment on that. But Mystery Science isn't completely aligned with the Next Generation Science Standards. So, you know, to me, that's why Amplify is such a great resource, because it is aligned with the Next Generation Science Standards.
So you really like Amplify?
Me personally, I do. I'm, I taught a unit, an Amplify unit in seventh grade. I've obviously taught it in fifth. I'm working with the fourth grade teachers now, and I've taught an Amplify unit in kindergarten. I'm also an G S X facilitator, so I'm, I know a lot about the Next Gen Science Standards and the pedagogy that go with it, because I train people, science teachers. So looking at this program, I absolutely love it. It's also one of the only programs that has been kind of given the green light for its being aligned with the Next Generation Science Standards. There's really not much out there that really aligns with it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tino. We really appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That was a wonderful presentation, and your digital classroom looks really awesome. So thank you. All right. So next we have, we're actually going to hold the number two on the agenda for a few minutes to see if our presenter makes it. And next, we're going to move on to the one-to-one Chromebook initiative at the secondary level. I believe that's going to be with Mr. Greg Rodriguez.
Yep. All right. Thanks for having us. So Mr. Parker, Mr. Burns, and Mr. Richard, we met a couple of months ago to discuss what we can do to really amp up the, well, we just said Amplify, so I guess we'll amp up more learning at the high school. So we're thinking about piloting a one-to-one initiative for Chromebooks for the high school students. So I sent a memo to the board for this committee specifically, discussing, you know, what we want to achieve, how many Chromebooks we'll need or we think we'll need, and presenting a possible technology fee to support.
Mr. Rodriguez, could you lean into your mic?
Yes, sorry. Okay. Is that better? So we're thinking, not every student is going to want or need a Chromebook to make this happen, so we're encouraging students to bring their own personal devices. They can hook onto the guest network. This is exactly why we wanted to upgrade our infrastructure the past three years, and we've done so successfully, so to support this program, to support a program like this. So COVID happened, and it kind of accelerated things a little bit. So now that we have, you know, a good amount of Chromebooks right now, and Keith and Nate are very supportive of the idea, this is what we're hoping to achieve starting in
Excellent. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? All right. We'll start with Mrs. Johnson.
How many Chromebooks do we have right now?
Let's see. Did you have another question while I was, while I'm looking this up?
I don't know if I can ask the remainder of the questions, or you want me to do it at the end?
Okay.
You can go on, go ahead.
Okay. Because I'm going to go back to last year and during the remote, how many Chromebooks came back damaged this year in 2020 to 2021?
Yep. So damaged came back 20, 224. Out of those 224 damaged, 165 were repaired.
165 repaired.
Yep.
How many were never returned?
As of last, two weeks ago, 813.
813?
Correct.
Never returned. So what have we done to try to get these 813 Chromebooks back?
Working with the principals and the building administrators and secretaries, making phone calls to those families to retrieve those Chromebooks.
And what happens if we don't get them back? Who's going to be responsible for these? Because I know we had no insurance, and I guess that's going to lead into my other question is, with this insurance, if the students don't return the Chromebooks, what's going to happen with the students at that point?
I believe the discipline would be up to the principals of the schools to decide that.
Yeah, we put holds on their accounts at the high schools, so, you know, they'll get fees at the end of the year. So as seniors, they have to kind of close out all their accounts, pay all their fees, and make sure everything's balanced to zero. So that's something that we always do prior to graduation, making sure any books, textbooks, anything else that they owe, uniforms, et cetera.
What about the ones who's not graduating from grades nine through 11 with the Chromebooks that aren't returned?
Yeah, we're trying hard. Like Greg said, making phone calls. We have Chromebooks coming in every day. Keith and I were just talking, you know, he's got a stack of six that are on his desk right now in the office, so they're slowly making their way back.
What else did I want to ask?
Do you want me to cycle back for a minute? I think we have another few other questions. Are you ready?
I'm just, I just got one other question, and you had?
I do have the number. It's 13,131. Yes.
Chromebooks?
That's in district right now.
In district?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And with this, if the parents do not buy the insurance policy, what's going to happen with the damages? Is it going to just, are we going to try to collect on it?
I will say, this, it's more of a technology fee rather than an insurance policy. So the fee would be collected, and this would subsidize damages, replacements, and whatnot. So that's what we're gearing it towards, as opposed to buying a policy which could be exponentially more expensive.
Okay. But if they don't buy this fee-based?
Well, it's in a tiered system, so if, so say a student is, has free or reduced lunch, then, you know, we're looking at a, like I had in the, yeah, $25, a full, for no free and reduced lunch, it's $50. Reduced lunch is 25, and free lunch is 15.
Okay. I get that, but if they don't buy this, I guess?
Well, I'm assuming we're going to go to a pay-to-play type of thing, so you have to pay the fee in order to get a Chromebook.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm sure I'll have more questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Ms. Oden?
How, how is this going to affect Chromebook carts at the middle school and elementary levels?
The middle school and elementary just won't be affected. So this is strictly at the high schools. This is where we're going to pilot it for a couple of years to see if it actually improves retention, graduation, and overall performance, before we want to expand it to any other level.
Okay. So if I'm hearing this correctly, all the Chromebook carts that were in the, the middle schools and the elementary schools are back fully?
Yes.
For use in those schools?
Yeah, they are, they, yeah, they're not affected by this, but they are in use right now, correct?
Okay. Thank you. I think this is a great idea for the high school. I think it's necessary. I think we're probably behind the curve a little bit in this, and I think this will bring us forward. I also want to thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for making sure that students have to change their passwords. One of the students, I've been harping on this for a while, only because I have a spouse who's a real technology person.
Yeah.
And he was just, he couldn't believe that the password was so simple.
Yep.
And that the students had it all the way through school.
No more. It's not like that anymore, so.
I, I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
I will say, it was a little bit of a pain period, but it's, it's worth the pain to go through that part.
One of the students who came the other night and spoke about class rank and GPA said, I didn't know this, a student, and he knew who it was going into his account, checking on his grades. And that academic dishonesty, I think it was more important to teach the kids about trying to be safe and not leaving things open for others. And I can't thank you enough for what you did. I know it wasn't easy, and I, I would guess maybe there are some that are not too happy. I don't know. Do you, do the students have to change them occasionally, just like, I know when I was teaching, every now and then they'd say, you have to change your password in five days?
Yeah, six-month expiration, so it's 180 days. And I, I don't want to take any, you know, I'll, I'll thank you for the compliment, but, you know, it's, it's a group effort. It's working with the principals, the assistant superintendent's directors, and, and my IT team as well. So this was like a group thing to make this happen, so.
Well, thank you to everybody that had anything, Keith, Nate. I know your technology staff will probably have a few extra things to do for those students who forget their passwords.
They're so bored right now. I'm just kidding.
So I just want to thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Grino?
Thank you. So, so this is an initiative to get a, an electronic device or a computer into all students' hand at the high school level. Is that correct?
All students who need them.
All students who need them.
Need them, who are in need. So we, we did a survey about a month ago and found that out of the sample size that returned of 1578, about 37% students identified saying that they would need a Chromebook for this. So we took those numbers and made it make sense for, let's say, the population of 3,600 between both high schools, and came out with roughly 1,300 Chromebooks would be needed for, for this program, so.
So, so that means that those students that, that said they don't need it, their, their family's providing them with a, with a, with a computer.
Correct.
So these are for the students that, whose family can't really afford to get them a computer?
They, they, they just don't want to use their computer from home, so.
For whatever reason, they can't.
Yeah, right.
They have no, they don't have access to a computer. So, and, so we're trying to get every, a computer into every student's hand with this in high school?
Correct.
That's, that's, that's the initiative?
Right. Yep.
Okay. And, you know, I, I think it's a good idea to, to do that, to put a, to put a computer in every student's hand. But what bothers me is the pay-to-play.
Mm-hmm.
And it's nothing personal to administration or anybody, but public schools are supposed to be equal opportunity for all. And we, we see this in sports. We see this, and now we're seeing it in academics, that in order to be, even to participate, parents have to come up with some money. So it really bothers me that we, we are now charging those families who, families who can already afford it, they give their kids a computer. But the ones that have two or three kids, or they have to, you know, pay every year, I think it's a burden on them. And if they're not, if their kids aren't eligible for free lunch, they're stuck in the middle. So I don't know if you're looking for a, a motion from us? Or are you looking for action?
I mean, I could, I could partly answer that. So our, our goal is not to gouge any students. So a part of this too is, is our free and reduced lunch application is also low. So if they fill this out, this will help, hopefully bring our free and reduced applications up. So that's part of the reason too. So at the end of the survey, we had a link that included the free and reduced lunch.
Right.
So this would help us expedite the process of, does a student qualify for free and reduced lunch as a family? So, and then we work with them after that.
Yeah. I have a philosophical problem with this. I have no problem with, you know, what you're trying to do or anybody in the, in the, in the district. I just have a philosophical problem that we're turning public schools into a pay-to-play kind of institution. And we never, we never charge students for, for, for books, for textbooks. I do know that years ago, you know, even, you know, for lab, even for lab, things in the lab, we usually don't charge, but sometimes they charged, in the old days, for slide rules and things like that. You had to bring your own slide rule or something. Now, I can tell how really old I am, but.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
But, but I, I just, I just, not going to support charging any family, if we put a, if we put a computer in their hand and they need that computer in order to be, in order to take, participate, I'm not going to, I'm not going to support that. I'm going to support putting a computer in, in the student's hands, yes. But I'm not going to support putting a student, a, a computer in a student's hand and saying, okay, hand over some cash. But, but I, you know, there's no, like I said, there's no criticism of what you're trying to do. I think we, we need to have computers, you know, because teachers use Google Classroom, and it's, it's great. I saw my kids use it. And, you know, it's, it's really, you know, we need to have our, you know, we need to be in the 21st century.
Right. I think this goes along, just in what, what Ms. Tino was doing before this with Amplify, and Amplify being such a huge part of the middle, the middle schools.
Right, right.
And eventually, like I said, we'd like to get to the middle schools to this level too, using Chromebooks in a one-to-one basis, so.
Right.
Yep.
So, so Mr. Rodriguez, I just wanted to actually clarify
Yep.
what Ms. Grino was speaking about. I read this, that the insurance is the only thing that is an optional purchase, correct? If you choose, not, students are not required to pay the fee unless they want to purchase the insurance. They still can get the Chromebook, but it is kind of at their risk, and they will be expected to take good care of it if they do not pay.
I don't think we got to that level. We have discussion where we were, so this is just a draft part. So, but it was kind of, I think that's where we were leaning towards more of a pay-to-play to get, to get the Chromebook, so.
For, just for delivery, all students would be expected to pay the fee or to purchase the insurance? They would be?
Purchase the insurance to?
The insurance is fee-based.
To get the Chromebook, right.
Does that make you feel more comfortable? That all students would have, but you would have access to the computers? However, it would be, the insurance is what they're having an option for?
I didn't see any insurance in this, in this.
The last page, it says Nashua District use only.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So that's where the tiered structure is for payment, for amount due.
Right. But it, it's not clear that this is insurance for, oh, it does say without insurance, but, oh, I wish to put, oh, okay, optional insurance. But I'm confused whether it's pay-to-play or insurance. It's, it's either, it's either one or the other, so I'm not sure which it is.
Yeah, and we can work on that too. So this is. Yeah, we, and we can work on that too, so this is a draft, so this is why we're just bringing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is, yeah, yeah.
You're just.
Huge draft, so.
You're just running up the flagpole.
Yeah, yeah, we're just running up the flagpole, this is all, this is what we're doing, so.
All right, okay.
Yep, yep, and we can refine this, so this is.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, Mrs. Johnson?
Thank you. How much is one Chromebook again?
Depending on supply chain, but right now, it's probably, let's say, it'll range from 190 to 220.
Okay, so let's go 220, okay, 220 times 813, so there's 100, there's 813 that have never been returned, and that's $220 per Chromebook, so that's 178,870 dollars and 75 cents worth of non-return Chromebooks.
That's, I would call that inaccurate, because these Chromebooks, a lot of them that went out are much older models, so you're looking, you're ranging from an older Chromebook.
Okay, so how much would that be, maybe?
You would say the low side, $90?
$90?
Yep. We try to give out our brand-new ones, absolutely lasts, and it's something that, just talking to Keith.
$73,170, okay, so there's a difference of $100,000. That, I don't care if it's the Nashville taxpayers, or if it's federal taxpayers, this money came from somebody, and I, the reason I, I pushed for this, South Hadley has this policy, and I brought some of them in during the remote learning, and then even last year, and I think the one that I pulled was from South Hadley, Mass., that it's not just Nashville that's doing this, a lot of school districts are doing this because of the cost of it to repair, to replace, and that it builds responsibility in the students also, that it's just not something we're giving to them, take it home, destroy it, bring it back, don't bring it back, it, and this way, it kind of gives the parents some assurance that if something happens to it, it can be repaired, because they have this, well, I, I don't see that this is maybe like a tech fee, if you read this, it's more like an insurance policy, like you would get somewhere at Best Buy.
So this is actually modeled after South Hadley.
Okay.
So this is, this is almost the same language as South Hadley, so.
That's fine, so I guess I did some pretty good research, huh?
Excellent research, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, I love to do research here, maybe because I have a little bit of extra time, but no matter how you look at this, we, as a board, as myself, I'll talk, really myself, myself as a board member, who represents the citizens, the taxpayers, the parents, the students, we can't afford to keep replacing things and not have any insurance here, that these are going to come back, or if they're broken, that we can't get them repaired, somebody has to pay for it, and I don't think that we, the taxpayers, have to pay for all this all the time, especially when it's $78,000 of Chromebooks that didn't come back, and then I didn't even count in, 165 that's damaged, and that was what, about $90 worth too?
Roughly.
Whatever it is, so you're probably adding in another $50,000 or less dollars in there, but when you start adding it up, it adds up, and that money could be used for something else that we need in the district, rather than to keep repairing and replacing things that shouldn't be, and that's been my whole argument from the whole time, so I don't care if it's from the Nashville taxpayers' pocket, or if when you pay your federal dollars, this money's coming in from us, from the feds, if we're using, as the money then could be used for other things, and I think that we need to have our students be responsible to make sure they take proper care of this, because it isn't theirs, it belongs to the district, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, so I actually have one question, actual questions, will there be extra Chromebooks available if, or extra chargers for students who leave their Chromebook at home that day, or maybe they get to school and it's not charged, that kind of thing?
Yes, we do, we do have a contingency, contingencies of Chromebooks at the schools, so.
Excellent, I am very much in support of this initiative, I think it's something where the Nashville really needs to kind of catch up in this way, especially at the high school level, you know, I think it's going to help not only students who are at home to do homework, but also in classroom things, I mean, writing, that's how everybody's doing, turning everything in Google Classroom now, so.
Yep.
I'm very supportive of this, I wish it was happening tomorrow instead of in January, but, you know, I'll give you another couple months, I guess.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brown.
So, and thank you to the tech department for pushing this through, making it happen, because I realize it's heavy-duty, and also.
It's also.
On our admins, because, you know, you gotta, you get to distribute them and write all the kids' names down, and that should be fun for you, so I guess, are there any other questions regarding the Chromebook initiative? All right, at this time, it doesn't look like there's any more questions, I'm guessing right now, since this was a draft, we are not looking at approving the.
Yeah.
Exact implementation, is that something we should expect maybe next month?
I would say so.
Sure.
Yeah, yep, we can work on something like that, get something back to you in maybe December.
All right, thank you so much.
We'll work right through the Thanksgiving break on this, so.
We appreciate it.
All right, sure.
Sorry, for anyone at home, why we're all scrambling around, we're hearing a lot of feedback from something, and usually that happens if we have a, an active electronic device in here, so the next item on the agenda is the assessments, the New Hampshire Fall interim SAS results for the middle schools, is that something we want to put up on the screen, Dr. Sarci, or are we just going to talk about it?
Sure, so I can just talk about it, so I can tell you, there actually is, unfortunately, there's a typo on this particular agenda, the, the assessments that were administered at the middle school level are actually diagnostic assessments, they are not New Hampshire SAS assessments, these are assessments that are called the Study-Sync Diagnostic Assessments, and they were, they were administered just for the purposes of finding out where students were, so that we knew, sorry, so that we knew where their starting point was, so that we could make sure that they were placed appropriately, appropriately in their classes, and so that they were able to receive their supports that they needed to, to have them be successful this year. All three of the middle schools were administered the ELA math and, ELA math and writing assessments, and again, these are not major assessments, this was just for the purposes of figuring out where students' starting points were.
Put that over here, there you go, I set it on your chair. All right. Thank you for, those of you for letting us pause, we were trying to figure out what was caused, the cause of our, our feedback situation, but I think it got fixed, so thank you, Dr. Sarci, this will make it a lot easier to hear you.
Yeah, so based on, again, like I was saying, I don't know if people could hear me over the feedback, but based on student performance, again, placement was determined for students with regard to reading, math, and writing, and then also supports were put in place based on their performance, this is just at the middle school level.
And when is the next round of, is there a mid-cycle testing for this?
Yes, so as Mr. Parker indicated in this report, essentially what they're going to do is, there are, we have interim, and we have summative New Hampshire SAS assessments, we also have what's called modular assessments, and the modular assessments are administered, administered for all things reading and writing, and also mathematics, they are organized by domain, also organized by topic, and so what Mr. Parker did was, he sat down with the coaches, and also the building administrators, and they came up with a schedule to administer the modular assessments that are aligned with what is happening in the classroom, so it's sort of an extra layer of assessment for students and also practice for them, so those are ongoing, we have an assessment calendar that we finalized, I would say probably in August, and that was shared with all of our staff members, and there's, there are ongoing assessments every single month.
Are there any questions from the committee? Yeah, Mrs. Johnson?
So, I guess my question is here, how are our students doing? Are they progressing, were they, a lot of them kind of behind?
So again, this is, this is, I can't speak to how they're doing based on these results, this is where their starting point was, and I, I can't tell you definitively in comparison to all the other middle schools across the country how our students are performing, but we just know where their starting place is.
Okay, because as I'm going through the ELA results, sixth grade Elm Street, 71% of the students met the grade-level expectation for word study, that was good, right?
So, one of the things that I want to point out is that they were assessed, they were assessed on grade-level standards, so they were assessed on standards for the grade level that they're in, so for students who are at grade level or above grade level, that is actually exceptional, because we wouldn't expect the majority of our students to be able to start the year demonstrating proficiency, because they haven't been exposed to the content yet.
Okay, 13% of the students met grade-level expectation for writing.
Yep, yep, so we have 13% of our students in sixth grade, is that what you're referring to? At this point, they're demonstrating that they are proficient at the grade level, they haven't even completed yet.
Okay, that's 13% out of how many?
So, certainly out of 100%, but again, they're, they're demonstrating that they are proficient when it comes to content, content that they have never been exposed to yet, so they're ahead of the game, which is definitely a favorable thing.
But only 13%. 17% of students met grade-level expectation on the study, SAT, reading diagnostic, so this is for the sixth grade level, they came in from fifth grade to sixth grade, right?
Yes, and again.
From remote to sixth.
So they're being assessed on the sixth-grade standards, they haven't, they haven't done sixth-grade work yet, or they hadn't gotten into sixth-grade work yet, so those who are meeting grade-level expectations are above where we would expect them to start.
But we didn't go backwards to see if they were at grade level when they went from fifth grade, did we do that to see that they were ready to move on, some of the students?
Well, certainly, they're.
At the end of the year, I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, so we did administer the New Hampshire SAS Spring Assessment, but that, the amount of students who actually took that assessment was extremely low, as it was across, across the entire state, so I don't know how much we can really, I don't know how much value we should put on the Spring Assessment, just because of the fact that we had very few participants, as did the rest of the state.
My concern is that a lot of these students aren't ready for the grades that they're in right now, and I hate to see them fall behind, you know, so I keep asking, what's our game plan, if we see the students starting to fall behind, not just one or two, but a group of them, because of the remote, listening to a lot of the parents saying that their students, their children, didn't really do well in the remote setting, so I keep asking for plans, and I, I haven't gotten a plan.
So, again, one thing I really want to point out is, there are a lot of bright lights here, we're seeing that when it comes to, again, sixth-grade ELA in Fairgrounds, 31% of the students are where they're supposed to be at the end of sixth grade, that's where they're starting, sixth grade, at Elm Street, 13% of the students are where they're supposed to be for writing at the end of sixth grade, and they haven't done sixth grade yet, at Penachuck, 25% of the students are where they're supposed to be at the end of sixth grade for writing, and they haven't encountered sixth-grade writing yet, seventh grade in Fairgrounds, 35% of the students are at where they're supposed to be at the end of sixth grade for writing, and 58% are at where they're supposed to be at the end of seventh grade for word study, before they have done word study work in the seventh grade, I think these are actually very favorable numbers that we're looking at.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Grino?
Thank you, so I just have a question about number six, the Spring New Hampshire SAS data, so, so when students are asked to take this, it's optional, not all students take it, is that correct?
Yes, so in light of the global pandemic, there was, the test was optional, typically, it's not really optional, I mean, parents can opt out if they want to, but the majority of our students in a traditional year would take the New Hampshire SAS, however, again, in light of the global pandemic, we had, the, the test was, was, was optional, and we had a significant number of students who opted out.
So, do we know the, the sample size compared to the total universe of students, or the total number of students that are in that, I mean, it would be, you don't have to tell me, but what, what it is, but we, we do know the sample size, we, we can find that out, right?
Absolutely, yep, and I, and I'll definitely say it's significantly, significantly lower.
Lower, okay, so if someone were to take these spring SAS data proficiencies and compare it, so, so when you say, compare it to other spring, previous spring, you're really not comparing a, you're comparing a lower sample of students to what may have, to those that may have taken it in the past, is that, would that be correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
I would say, rough guess, maybe a quarter of our students, maybe, probably less than that, took the New Hampshire SAS.
I, I think that's important to know, that's interesting to know, and, and so in previous years, in the spring, students were required to take the SAS, were they, could they opt out?
It was very unlikely for students to opt out of the SAS testing, it's something that was not encouraged, something that was highly discouraged, in fact, I would just say statewide, I can't speak to Nashville, because I wasn't here before the pandemic, but definitely discouraged, and it was very unlikely for students to not take the summative assessment.
Okay, right, that's good information, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, just for my own clarification, what is, 18 students are identified, 18% of students are identified, does that mean in need of special services?
Yes, so I, I believe, and I am speculating here, because Mr. Parker did provide this section of the report, but I believe that that would be students who receive special ed services.
Thank you, and so, in a bright spot here, as you mentioned, we've got, for example, 36% of the students at Fairgrounds are, have met their grade-level expectations for some subjects, do we have a strategy for continuing to push those students throughout the whole school year?
Yeah, so I think one of the, one of the great things to, I don't want to say great things to come out of the pandemics, pandemic, but one of the things that we're really focusing on is, now we're seeing all of these students who, in light of the challenges that we had during the pandemic, they've, you know, they're showing us that they were able to persevere, and, and they're coming to us with these amazing assets, and this really brings light to that, and I think that certainly we're making a lot of decisions now to make sure that not only we focusing on students who have unfinished learning, who need a lot of support, but we're also focusing on the students who are at grade level and above, so that we can make sure that we keep pushing them, because I think one of the worst things that we can do is have high achievers with low growth, we don't want that to happen, we want to keep pushing them.
Thank you, I really, I'm glad to hear that, my last question is actually then the other side of that, sorry, I should have actually written down, the students who are not, actually, this is actually, I guess, more assessing as we go on, so I recognize that this is beginning-of-the-year assessments for grade-level learning, are, we're going to see another report either in the spring or the end of the school year on this?
Absolutely, yes, and again, we, in our assessment calendar, assessments are built into the assessment calendar every month, so the modular assessments that you'll see results from will be directly aligned to what students are learning in the classroom, so we might have some months where grade levels are not being assessed, but that's because their, their unit, or their, their, their full module hasn't been completed yet, and once it is. And once it is, then we will kind of thread in, or I don't want to say we, because I'm not secondary, but secondary, will thread in those modular assessments.
Okay, so, excellent, thank you. So, if I could make one request for the next time we see this info, I would love to see something comparative, maybe over, over a few years, maybe a few, because this is, the SAS has been given to the district, or I'm sorry, throughout the state for many years now. So, maybe we could see something comparative, you know, pre-pandemic, during the pandemic, because we know that we don't have the same sample size, and then moving forward, so that we can make, see that we're trending in the right direction?
Absolutely, yep, we can make that happen. And you want that 3 to 8, correct?
Yeah, whatever the, this, I think that would be good, consistent 3 to 8. If that information is available, that would be exceptional.
Definitely, yep, I'll make sure you have that longitudinal data. I just wanted to go back, if we could, to the elementary fall assessments. Is it okay to circle back there? Is that okay? Okay, great. So, in, at the elementary level, we administered two end-of-module assessments. Eureka is our core math, our math program. And in grade 2, the students just finished up their first module. And I'm proud to report that out of all of our elementary schools, 68% of our students demonstrated proficiency at or above grade level. And we have 32% of our students who have not demonstrated proficiency yet. And I want to make sure that I emphasize the "yet" because we are a competency-based system, and we are giving students chances to be able to demonstrate competency. Perhaps they are not ready yet, that doesn't mean that they won't be. So, 68% of our students are, have demonstrated proficiency at this time in grade 2. And then in grade 4, we have 76% of our students, district-wide, who demonstrated proficiency at grade level and at, at grade level or above grade level. And then 24% of our grade 4 students have not demonstrated proficiency yet.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Mrs. Johnson?
Thank you. I know that in New Hampshire, the math has dropped, I think, about 16% throughout the state. I think it is. My question to you is, when do we, as we see they're not picking up the knowledge of the math, when do we step in and realize that we need to give them more like remedial help so they don't go on to the next grade behind?
Yeah, so, I'm going to talk a little bit more about our professional development later on tonight, but we certainly are addressing learning loss when it comes to mathematics, which, again, like you said, Ms. Johnson, seen this all across the street, the state, rather, in light of the pandemic. Math performance is, is down. We definitely know that math is an area where we need to focus. And so, we are doing that during our In-Service Day on, geez, November 2nd, I think it was. We brought a math consultant in to focus on instructional strategies, engaging strategies for our elementary teachers. I will tell you that, that feedback from teachers was overwhelmingly positive. Teachers left that session and felt like, at least, many teachers reported that they felt like the practices that they learned about and the strategies that they learned about, they could use the next day with their students to improve engagement and then hopefully, understanding. We have to really focus on conceptual understanding of math. I know that the Common Core came out in 2009, it's 2021, but it's, it's a, it's a departure from what we've always done to teach the conceptual aspect of math. We are very used to teaching fluency and procedure, like step-by-step instructions. But when we want kids to be able to understand visuals and models and understand why things are happening, it's challenging for some people. It's challenging for me as a mom and challenging for me as an educator. I mean, I had to relearn math. Many of us have had to do that. But I will tell you that teachers who do have a firm grasp on employing or teaching conceptual understanding of our standards have students who have a much deeper understanding, and then they have a greater likelihood of being able to apply their knowledge when the content gets more sophisticated and more challenging for them because they understand why versus just step-by-step.
So, we have a plan in place for the students that just don't grasp the concept. So, we know that as we see through the year, because I'll tell you, I'm not a mathematician. I say that all the time. Math has never been my strong point, you know? I hate math, to be honest with you, because it's such a weak point of mine. So, that's something that you become afraid of-
Sure.
-because when it's your weak point. That I'd hate to see any students that happen to because they feel that they can't keep up with the class, and they go on to the next grade, and they haven't mastered, let's say, grade 2 or grade 3, and now they're in grade 4 and grade 5, and they haven't mastered the concept of the math, and now they go further and further behind. That's where my concern is.
100%. I will tell you that today, at District Office, we had professional development going on. Shout out to our math coach, Meg Duprat. Meg was facilitating a PD session, and essentially, she was showing teachers how to use manipulatives, showing teachers how to make fluency practice fun, doing lots of games with them. Actually, the teachers were actually engaging in the games so that they could practice, so that when they go into their classrooms tomorrow, they have actionable strategies that they can employ. That happened this Monday for the late schools and last Monday for the early schools. And we have follow-up professional development in another week, and then again in February. So, we are definitely committed to making sure that our kids don't experience kind of what you described. I'll say that for me, you know, I was an English teacher. I always felt like I was not a math person, but we all can be math people. It's just a matter of making sure that we have a deep understanding so that we aren't math-phobic because it's a little bit, it's hard for a lot of us, me included.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more questions? Not right now? Thank you so much for that presentation, talking about the assessments. And I'm actually looking forward to maybe having a math presentation sometime soon, too. That'll be fun. All right, next is the Curriculum Management Plan.
Yep, so, the Curriculum Management Plan, essentially, we have to revise it every couple of years. And this revised version is really, it really just includes some changes that were needed to ensure that we accelerate student learning based on some of the things that, you know, that we just kind of discussed in light of the pandemic, in light of some of the learning loss that we've seen. Essentially, what we want to do is make sure that we allow for continuous and systematic evaluation of our curriculum, our instructional materials, and our assessments. We want to make sure that all of our materials are certainly aligned to the standards, and GSS, as Mrs. Tino just talked about, Common Core. We want to make sure that all of our curriculum reflects the shifts that, that we need to be seeing. And, and yeah, so, again, there are, there are some slight changes here. And this is our updated draft that is valid through 2023.
Does anyone on the committee have any questions about the Curriculum Management Plan? Mrs. Johnson?
Thank you. On page 12, it says, "Parents in the community treat us as valued and respected partners involved in the activities of the school enhance students' learning." So, are we doing this right now, that we have this in here? Just because I know that, I feel that there are times that parents feel that they aren't respected or involved in the activities, you know? You hear them at some of the board meetings. So, am I getting it that there might be a disconnect somewhere, and we're going to make sure now in this core beliefs that parents are totally engaged now?
So, that's certainly our goal. That's always, I think that's probably been everybody's, every educator's goal. I can't, again, I'm, you know, newish to Nashua, but I would certainly say that as an educator, we want to have our parents be partners in this process. I know that just what I'm seeing every day involves a lot of outreach when it comes to our parents and engaging them. You know, thinking about some of the amazing opportunities that I've seen at Led Street right next door, and some of the ways that we are trying to, again, engage our parents. We want to make sure that we are mindful of parents' native languages, native cultures. We want to make sure that they have access to our curriculum, they have access to what we're doing in school every day so that they can talk to their kids, and they can be a part of their learning. And all of those things we're very, very much mindful of. That's one of the things that I really value about being here in Nashua, is that I would say parents, parent feedback is very much valued and appreciated.
Yeah, because as I read here on page 10, it talks about the students understands learning strengths and needs, which we just spoke about. Meet to exceed learning requirements of district curriculum, which is very important, which we discussed. Recognize the impact of behavior on learning and learning of others. Seeks assistance and guidance when not successfully meeting the learning requirements or specific lessons. And I think that's, that's the biggest piece that, for our students. But again, when, when we talk about the parent provides information about their children, I know, parents came in here. Reinforces the learning process by monitoring students' progress. And I also got something from a parent about the progress report, which I was really kind of shocked on that. I'm hoping maybe we can bring that back up again, the progress reports, and it was for grades 4 to 5. Let's see. Attends parent-teachers conference, and I hope, are we doing those now? With the schools open now? Good, good. Creates a home environment that supports learning, which is so important because even when I was on the board the first time, I said, "Parent involvement is one of the most important things out here." Because if parents are engaged, they get their kids engaged more. And participate in parent education activities, and we have that, that's half the battle. So, I just wanted to bring that up. But again, you know, the core beliefs, as I read that, and it said, "Parents and community," that kind of jumped out at me, that we have to listen to the parents. We, they're the ones who know their kids the best. And when they come into meetings, we really need to respect them. Whether we like what they say or not, we need, we owe them the respect for coming here and speaking to us. Thank you.
No more comments? Okay, thank you for bringing this up. So, my, actually, I wanted to draw attention. I actually really appreciated the curriculum management definitions on page 8 in here. There's a lot of things that we hear words go on, but if you're not deep into education, you might not recognize things like curriculum align, the difference between curriculum alignment and curriculum articulation, standards, objectives, that kind of thing. So, I think that's really a valuable piece of this. So, I really appreciate that because I think it also helps the teams that are going to be studying the new curriculum that we bring in to understand what they're looking for together. Because sometimes if you haven't been working on it for a long time. So, I think, I appreciate that very specific breakdown in here. And it also very specifically breaks down the responsibilities of each group of folks who's assessing the curriculums. My question is, when you develop the teams that are going to be piloting the next curriculum programs, because I do like the fact that you have a schedule that's very clear, and I actually can't find which page it's on, but I know it was in here somewhere. There it is. The kindergarten screening, benchmark, all the different, this, the slate, the time periods in which you're going to be updating things. I don't know if I missed it in here. When will, how will the teacher, the teachers, parents, administrators who are chosen to be on the curriculum evaluation teams, how does that selection happen?
So, again, I'm new to the, I'm new to the district, but I will, I'll just speak from past experience. And I would certainly say that we would be looking for, we'd be looking for interests. I would imagine that we probably would send out some sort of a survey. And I would also imagine that we would be looking for maybe some recommendations from the principal, from building principals or coaches, that sort of thing. We have a lot of amazing teachers who really want to participate, and sometimes they just need somebody to say, "Hey, you know what? You'd be really great to participate in this. We really value your feedback." And then that sort of jumpstarts participation every once in a while.
Excellent. I actually agree from my past work in volunteer management. It's, a lot of times, it's just people want to be asked, and they don't know, they don't even know that the position or the opportunity is there as available until after it's made, until it's made there, made aware, so. All right, excellent. I look forward to hearing more about that in the future. Do you need us to move on this draft?
I would say yes.
Okay. All right, so, I'm looking for a motion to accept the Curriculum Management Plan draft as presented and recommend it to the Board of Education.
So, moved.
I'll second.
All right. That was made by Ms. Chilio. It was seconded by Ms. Tricorino. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? All right, or not nay, it's a yay for everyone. And unanimously passed at 7:06. The next item on the agenda is professional development updates.
Yes, so, as I alluded to earlier, we had a wonderful day on November 2nd. Just want to certainly give a shout out to all of our Unified Arts leads and our guidance leads. They submitted proposals. They came to me and they said, you know, "We want to make sure that we engage in work that's meaningful for us and that's relevant to our content." And, you know, certainly said, "Absolutely, so send some proposals my way." And what happened was essentially the content teams, like the art teachers, the music teachers, the guidance folks, they got together, and they kind of collaborated to submit proposals. And I'm proud to say that all of the proposals were very well thought out. They were all approved, and Unified Arts teachers and guidance counselors engaged in training that was applicable to their content. We also had a lot of training for our special educators, our social workers. I certainly want to make sure that I commend Marsha Bagley and also Dan Alexander, our special ed director and assistant director, because they offered a variety of professional development options, including CPI training, challenging behavior, managing challenging behaviors, also finding a place for children's feelings. And certainly, we, we, we talked to our friends from, oh, boy. Jeez, the name escapes me, the wonderful partners that we have. But Sean King is the person who collaborates with our school district, and she provided PD on trauma-informed care. And then we also had Case Management 101. We have some new case managers. And so, Marsha and Dan got together and made sure that our case managers knew that they were supported. And then our chief school psychologist, Anne Price, offered professional development regarding how to effectively write a written prior notice. All of those options were very, very helpful and meaningful to members of our special education team. Additionally, for the elementary classroom teachers, they essentially engage in a three-part professional development opportunity. The first part of the session was all the teachers got together, and we talked about shifting the lift. And essentially, what we were talking about is making sure that our students were engaging in work, and teachers were more facilitators rather than sort of leading the learning with students. We want to make sure that students come to discoveries and on their own or with their partners, and we want to make sure that we don't take that cognitive load away from them. And because what we really want students to do is learn to persevere. So, sometimes struggle feels a little bit uncomfortable, but we want kids to engage in a productive struggle. We don't want to leave kids languishing. That's not what we're suggesting. But a little bit of tension, a little bit of a productive struggle is a good thing. And so, we talked a little bit about, during that first session, about how to, just what classroom practices we could leverage with the amount of times that we have, the amount of time that we have with students so that we can ensure that they're talking, thinking. And then we were talking about all of these things in the context of mathematics. What we also did was, we had a session, we broke up our elementary teams, K-2 and then 3-5. So, while K-2 was engaging in professional development with a consultant, Carolyn Worster, she's a local New Hampshire person, and me. Grades, teachers in grades 3-5 were working with their building leadership to engage in a data dive so that they could talk about their students and how to meet their needs academically and with regard to social, what they need socially and emotionally. The session that we had with Carolyn Worster really talked about our own mindset- The session that we had with Carolyn Worster really talked about our own mindsets, kind of some of the things that we talked about tonight, our own math experiences and our mindsets and how our own mindsets impact the instruction of our students. And we also talked about, we looked at some of our lessons in Eureka. And then we talked a lot about strategies and how we can help kids to make sense of what they're learning. And then finally, we talked a little bit about the research and how our brains grow through struggle and tension, which is really, really important. I always would tell my students, every time I make a mistake, my brain grows. And it's true. Certainly is true. So those sessions were basically flip-flopped. And then subsequently, 3-5 engaged in the PD with Carolyn and myself. And then K-2 engaged in a day-to-dive with their building leadership.
Thank you very much. Sounded like they were really great sessions. Any questions? No? All right. All right. The next thing is the NHLI update.
Yeah, so we do have a contract with NHLI. And essentially what they're doing is they are working with us to help us develop professional learning communities. And they're also helping us to create and administer balanced and meaningful assessments. I will say that it's, the work with NHLI is off to a great start. We were very responsive and receptive to teacher feedback. We wanted to make sure that when we rolled out this work with NHLI, it was going to be the time where teachers felt comfortable and they felt like they were ready for something, not necessarily new, but something that was going to require, require a little bit of work. And the same, same when it comes to building leadership. And I will tell you that, you know, initially, some of our building leaders were worried about taking on one more thing. And then what we heard as the folks from NHLI were slowly making their rounds into schools, what we heard, especially from some, maybe some administrators who are the most reluctant, they would come back to their colleagues and say, you know what, this actually was really awesome and you all will love it. I was a little worried, I didn't know if I wanted to take on one more thing and it actually was really, really meaningful. So that's really exciting to see. I will also say that NHLI came here to the high school and they engaged in some professional learning with secondary folks. And from what I'm hearing, that was a really productive day.
Any questions? All right. Thank you for that update. Next, we have WestEd Professional Development Update.
So back to November 2nd. Our team of, I believe, 24 certified ELL teachers engaged in professional development with WestEd. And the purpose of this full-day PD session was to really strengthen our teachers, our teachers' understanding of the EL experience, also deepen their understanding of language acquisition and how that process works. Have students talk about what the persistent opportunity gaps are for our English learners. They talked a little bit about what it means to design and deliver academically rigorous and culturally relevant instruction. And they really talked about just creating inclusive learning environments, environments, and then building capacity through our professional learning, which is what we're really trying to do. So essentially, we are planning for 10 hours of professional development for all of our teachers across the district. And our 24 certified ELL teachers are the ones who are going to be facilitating that learning. And so this full day of PD really helped to prepare them for our first early release date, which is going to take place on December 8th. And that will be sort of the kickoff to our focus on English learners. As we've talked about before, English learners do make up one of the largest growing populations, not only here in Nashville, but across the entire country. And we know that we need to do better when it comes to serving them. And we also know that best practices for English learners are really best practices for all kids. So definitely looking forward to that work.
Excellent. All right. Next is an, is this an update on community outreach or, all right, let's hear that.
Yes. So, I wish I had my list in front of me. This is something that's really exciting. So what we know is that we have all of these community partners. We have Mount Prospect Academy, which is something that we talked about earlier this year. We have Greater Nashua Mental Health. We have NAMI. We have the YMCA Boys and Girls Club. We have Youth Council. The list goes on and on. And so what we talked about was we really want to make sure that we leverage the supports that we have, which are abundant. But we want to make sure that we leverage them so that we can help to support the greatest number of students. And so we have, on an ongoing basis, been bringing all of our community partners to the table. And we've had discussions about what each agency is able to offer, what needs they're able to make, what type of tiered instruction they're able, I mean, not instruction, what type of tiered support they're able to offer. And basically, especially when it comes to our community partners that help us with some mental health challenges, we want to know if, you know, if something is happening with a student, who do we call? Who's the best person to help us? And then also, when it comes to being proactive and trying to circumvent, you know, situations that are unfortunate that arise, we want to make sure that kids have a great place when they're, they have a great experience when they're at school. We want to make sure that they have activity. We want to make sure that they have mentors. We want to make sure that they're having fun at school in addition to engaging in cognitively demanding work. And so we, so what we've really done is we've kind of identified and created this flowchart of who everybody is, what everybody offers. And also what we did was, which is really wonderful, is we gave all of our administrators a chance to kind of speak about what was going on in their, what has been going on in their schools. And I will certainly highlight some of our community partners, like the Y, like the Boys and Girls Club, like Youth Council, who have come up with some really innovative ways to address the needs that we have in individual schools. So that work has kind of been ongoing. But what we did last Tuesday, I believe, is we had our first all-admin SEL fair. And that was really amazing because it was really every single administrator from across the district, from technology, food service, it was everybody. And we brought everybody to the media center, center at South. And all of our community partners stood up and they basically presented for like five to seven minutes each. And everybody kind of got a feel for what the different agencies offer. We brought in some partners like Teen Inc. We brought in somebody from the state who talked about really streamlining access to mental health care, a lot of information that maybe people didn't know before. And so following their short presentations, the, the folks from the agencies basically set up tables and then the administrators could go and talk to, you know, whoever they wanted to talk to. You know, I certainly know a lot of people were really inspired by and really impressed by the, the presenter from Teen Inc. And so I saw some people go right over to that table and they said, wait, we want to know how do we, not Teen Inc., excuse me, Girls Inc., I apologize. I apologize. I knew you caught it. So, you know, they, they were saying like, hey, how do we bring you to our schools? What you're saying is just really amazing. How can we work with you? And the same for the Boys and Girls Club, same for the YMCA. And yeah, just really coming together to make sure that we support all of our kids.
Any questions? Mr. Guarino?
I want to, I want to congratulate you on, on a community outreach, great community outreach effort. I think it's very important, so it's, it's great work that you're doing. So thank you.
So we are on to our final agenda item, Learning 2025.
Yes. So Dr. McKinney and Di, and actually Mr. Parker as well, we're all part of the, the National Superintendent's Association. And basically, they sent out some information and they talked about, the information talked about demonstration systems or demonstration networks across the country. And so we were provided an opportunity to be able to be part, to have our school system be part of this demonstration network. And essentially, the participation in this network would allow us to engage in a process of advancing student-centered, equity-focused, and future-driven education. And there are lots of, certainly lots of advantage of joining this network. And some of them have to do with having a senior consultant who would work for, work with us rather, to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our learners of the future, really. We would be talking a lot about our district's priorities and talking about some of our challenges, and then talking about how can we be more successful for our students. We would also be talking a lot about an action plan for the district, addressing some of the concerns maybe that we talked about earlier tonight. How are we going to make sure that not only are we, not only are we helping our students who have unfinished learning, but how are we helping our students who are showing us that they are above grade level and they need to be challenged even more? We would also get some professional development for our leadership teams to sort of really dig into how do we meet the needs of our future learners? And then back to that community engagement piece, it would be really important for our consultant to work with us to make sure that we are engaging our parents, our families, also the caregivers of students. Sometimes those folks kind of get left out. We would have, we would, basically, we would have ongoing consultations with these folks so that we could monitor our progress and then kind of readjust when it was necessary. And back to the professional development, we would just be engaging in transformative and innovative research practices. And so that would all be part of the cohort that we would be joining. I definitely think this is a wonderful, I definitely think this is a wonderful opportunity for our district because we want to make sure that we are district of the future. We want to make sure that, you know, we have practices that are traditional and that are in place and they are working really well. But then we also want to make sure that as we look ahead, what does that look like for our students? And how do we make sure that kind of, to Mr. Guarino's point, how do we make sure that we are student-centered and we are equity-focused, which is very important to our district? And then again, future-driven.
Does anyone from the committee have any questions or comments? Okay. So I actually have several questions. I, when I originally read this, I thought it looked great because I was thinking it was more of like being a 21st century school where we're technology, I read the word technology enhanced and I actually really like that. It's one of the reasons that I'm really supportive, very supportive of the one-to-one and taking that through the district. After I've been reading a little bit more, I have a few concerns. A, I originally also thought that it was no, at no cost, but it seems to be it is, I was looking for the final page for the price, $14,000? All right, so the $14,000. I've recognized that we do have a lot of ESAR funding right now, but this looks like it's going to, that's an annual fee, it looks like. And if this goes all the way through 2025, eventually that ESAR funding is going to be gone and we're going to have to find that in the budget permanently to stay part of the organization. So I'm a little concerned about the $14,000. And will may also already belong to the New Hampshire State Board Association. Let's see, I have, I guess I have, I have four more questions, actually. So next, I kind of want to, I almost want to wait on this to find out a little bit more about whether this aligns with our strategic plan. We have a strategic plan, I think, that goes for another few years. And when it says, as you aspire towards systemic redesign, that seems pretty intense when we do have a strategic plan in place. We've also got a permanent superintendent search going on, so we don't know how that will factor into the transition for the next generation of, or next generation, the next, board, we have a new boards coming on. We also have several different contracts we just signed for, to bring in counseling services and different assessments for students. So I'm a little bit concerned that adding this in, it's another tracking and looking, you know, we're going to hopefully use the information in a meaningful way. Are we starting to spread our human resources too thin by adding in one more kind of project to do that seems like a massive undertaking?
So what we certainly could do is, we certainly could, I could certainly go back and, and sit down with Dr. McKinney and really look at our strategic plan to make sure that it aligns. And then I think it would be helpful to bring that information back to you so that, back to the board, so that we could talk about, you know, kind of, does it align? And, and, and maybe sort of, you know, either, we might either decide that we want to table it, or we might decide that, no. In fact, what our district is looking to do really aligns with this work. We certainly can do that. And I think that would be, I think that Dr. McKinney would definitely approve of that.
Okay. All right. Well, I actually would be very supportive of that, digging in a little bit deeper to make sure that we are all moving in the same direction. I'm seeing a nod from Ms. Gilio, so I'm thinking she maybe agrees. Mr. Guarino, would you be comfortable with maybe getting some more information on this before we move forward on it? All right. And, but did you have a question before we, to ask also? All right, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I happen to agree with you, Ms. Brown. I mean, given the fact that we have a superintendent search coming up in January, I would rather have a new superintendent take a look at this. We don't know who it's going to be. So I would hate to have whoever comes in not have the chance to say yea or nay on this. That's number one. Number two, I'd like to know what other districts in the state is using this program? And I'd like to get feedback on that, whether or not they're happy with it or not, how long they've been involved in this. Because I went online, I did a little more research, and Southwestern Schools dropped new initiative, Learning 2025 After Parents Raise Concerns. So, you know, I haven't, I didn't really go into a deep, deep research. I just kind of did a surface one and I'm sure I could find some more. So I like, I read both sides of it, but I also like to know if parents had raised concerns, what are the concerns? Why did they do this? And then the district drops it because the parents are concerned. But I'd like to know if any other districts in New Hampshire is using Learning 2025. I think this is why I can kind of call, I could maybe find some parents and ask them the questions. Are they happy with this? If they are, why? You know, what brings a difference in? If not, I'd like to understand that also before we start adding new initiative, another learning type of policy, curriculum, everything in here. I know we do social, it has social learning models, which we have social emotional learning right now. What else did I read in some of this? But do we, do we already have some of this in our plans right now? So I would like to get that answered, hopefully maybe in our packets, we can find out what other districts. And I think it's, we really need to take a look at everything broadly right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Gilio?
I just, I might be misunderstanding, but I know the superintendent search is going on and I know that with the new board, we're going to make decisions about that. But I'm under the impression that we will not be hiring someone until they will be starting July 1st and not the middle of the school year. Am I mistaken in that?
It's my impression that it would be on, on July 1st would be when, when it would begin. So I am not saying we should table this discussion until then.
That would be a long time.
I just think that we should, yeah. I think that we should just make sure that we're, dive in a little bit deeper.
Definitely.
Is the committee content with just going by consensus on this or would you like to make a motion? Go ahead. Mr. Guarino?
I just have a quick question. Looking at this, it looks like it's support for administration, like a sort of online support for administration. Would that be correct?
So there is definitely support for administration, but also it, really the focus is helping administrators ensure that our school system is committed to supporting the whole child. And then also, most importantly, ensuring, ensuring that no student is marginalized. And I think that's the part that we, that was really sort of, that, that spoke to us as a leadership team. Just again, ensuring that all students have equitable access to high-quality education and making sure that no student is marginalized. high-quality education and making sure that no student is marginalized. So I'm definitely happy to work with Dr. McKinney to bring some more information to the board. And then hopefully, you know, we can just provide a little bit more information about how this plan aligns to our strategic plan.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so I think that brings this to the end of our agenda. Is there anyone in the committee who'd like to make a comment or add anything? Yes, Mr. Guarino?
I would just like to thank Dr. Sarfati. She had a very, very heavy agenda tonight and you brought us a lot of information. We are reaching out to parents and your outreach efforts so that it's, it's always good to know. So I just want to let you know that the board appreciates, appreciates your support, what you did. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you so much.
For tonight's meeting.
I second that and I, I appreciate all of, all that we've learned in this meeting tonight. This has been a very spectacular meeting, I think, even though we didn't get to the MTSS, but we can get that next time probably. But this is just a lot of information and a lot of things that we've been asking for for a while and now we're getting them. And I think this is, I've only been on the committee a few months, but I liked this meeting the best so far. So thank you.
Great. I like that.
Thank you so much. Again, also, I could also, I'm going to weigh in, you did an excellent job. This is a huge amount of information and you've delivered it very clearly. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All right. Motion by Mr. Guarino, seconded by Ms. Gilio. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed? All right. So we are adjourned at 7:34.